Eight, seven, six, five, four, three, two, one. Have a good show.
Would like to call to order the April 6, 2021 Cabarrus County Board of Commissioners Work Session. Welcome, everyone. It's good to hit that gavel again since it's been exactly one year since we've been together in person. So I'm glad that we're able to do that again. Just for the benefit of our television audience, we are all socially distanced, over six feet apart in the room. And so we feel like we're doing this safely as people have prescribed for us to do. So first item up is the approval of our work session agenda, and you all have a copy of that before you. Do I hear a motion to approve the work session agenda, including the changes on page three?
Second.
Okay, we have a motion by Commissioner Honeycutt, second by Commissioner Shue. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, no. That motion passes. And we move now to discussion items. First up, item 3.1, Nonprofit Resiliency Grant Update. And we're glad to have Ellie Landrum with us virtually for that report.
Good afternoon. Thank you so much for hosting me virtually. Please give me one moment. I will pull up the PowerPoint and shift my screen. Perfect. Can everybody see the title page?
Yes, ma'am.
Perfect. So I will be sharing some of the wonderful things our nonprofits in our community are accomplishing with the funds that Cabarrus County has allocated through our nonprofit resiliency grant program. So last fall, the grant program was approved by the board and 32 organizations were funded, a total of $1.1 million. The grant program gave priority to nonprofits that focused in one or more of these four key areas: food, education, housing, and healthcare. The grant program ran from November 2020 through the end of April 2021, so our nonprofits are wrapping up their spending this month. And the following slides will give some more detail on what these nonprofits have accomplished in a few short months. And I will note, these numbers are as of the end of February, as our March end of month reporting is still rolling in. So some of our nonprofits have distributed hundreds of boxes of food and toiletries to over 600 families, while others have provided tens of families with advocacy and counseling on topics like insurance, healthcare, and family support services. We did have one organization that gave out 15 subgrants to local schools and teachers, and those subgrants included projects like online math software programs, books, strategy games, outdoor sensory path for exercise, STEM competition programs, cameras for virtual learning, math and science simulation programs, and even rocket creation and testing. And one of our nonprofits focused solely on mental health promotion, bringing increased awareness to self-care during the pandemic. Other nonprofits provided free or reduced-priced healthcare and mental health services to over 300 people in our underserved populations in our community, while over 1,800 families and individuals received rental and utility assistance through some of our key nonprofits. And this was before the county ERAP program was established. And the grant program also funded payroll support for nonprofits to allow them to continue providing services with full staffing. And we also supported hundreds of orders of personal protective equipment and sanitization so that the organizations could keep clean, healthful spaces for their clients. So I have a few funding updates for the board. A couple of our nonprofits presented reallocation plans in the county, and this is just shifting some of their funds as other needs arose over the past few months since they were first awarded their funding agreements. So El Puente was originally awarded $50,000, and they were reallocating 10,000 of those of the total award to book CHA vaccine appointments, logistics, and provide volunteers and staff for form checking eligibility and running the clinics every Thursdays. They're currently supporting 12 volunteers at each CHA vaccine clinic. And the reallocation of this money to these clinics was deemed a new and more pressing need. But the remaining 40,000 of their funds is still going to their original budgeted programs, which are the mental health workshops and food vouchers. And then Midway's Opportunity House would like to use a portion of their total grant award to assist with rental payments in addition to their originally budgeted peer support counseling program. And finally, we just want the board to know that the county currently has just over $585,000 remaining in the original nonprofit grant funding that is unspent and unallocated. This pot of money could be distributed to nonprofits in a second round of grant funding, or it could be reabsorbed by the county for other COVID-related or emergency uses. So I would love to have the board's opinion on the potential use of these funds, but no answer needs to be given today. And so with that, I'll just conclude this grant update. I want to thank you all so much for your support, and a big thanks to all of our nonprofits who provides so much needed programming and resources to our community.
Thank you for that report, Ellie. It sounds like that there have truly been some good opportunities for folks that have come from that. Does anyone else have questions they would like to ask about the program?
I've got one. You might have said this, but is there a timeline for these funds when they have to be dispersed by?
Yes, they have through the end of April to spend all of their funds, and the majority of the organizations were awarded upfront. Just a handful are given reimbursements on a monthly basis.
And I'm really talking about the $585,000 the county still has?
That is through the end of this fiscal year. I suppose we could reallocate those funds for next fiscal year, but I think we would want to try to spend that remaining amount through June 2021.
Thank you.
Are the nonprofits aware that there are some additional available funds? Or is that something that, of course, I guess we'd need to decide how we want to do that first, but has there been enough publicity that they would know to let us know if they need additional items?
They have definitely been asking for additional funding. I know with the latest round of federal stimulus money, they have gotten some additional help, but they are always looking for some additional grant funds. I have not made them aware of what we currently have, just because I didn't want to raise hopes in case we ended up using the money for other purposes. But I know we can get the funds distributed and used by nonprofits.
Right. And if it's by the end of, that just only gives us a couple, what, three months until the end of the fiscal year?
It would, but I would probably ask management and budget if we could reallocate those funds for next fiscal year, and it's possible we could extend the period through the end of summer or the end of the fall.
Right, okay. Any other questions?
I've got a quick question, Ellie. So on your slide where it says 48 advocacy, sorry about that, says received advocacy on a variety of topics like insurance, healthcare, and family support services. Is that just a one-on-one meeting with somebody, or that an advocacy meeting would be, we meet with the client and then take them to somebody else to get information on insurance, healthcare, family? Just provide a little more detail on what exactly that entailed.
Often, it's one-on-one meetings, and then they provide referrals to other organizations or even for-profit companies, giving them discounts on certain services. But yes, generally, it's one-on-one meetings, and they usually are reoccurring weekly, biweekly, or monthly.
Okay, so that's a case where the family or someone is asking for help, and then we're just trying to figure out where to send them?
Yes, sir. That's exactly it.
Okay, fantastic. Well, this is, just purely based on numbers, this is a lot of touch points with the citizens of this county in a very encouraging and positive way throughout something that was anything but encouraging and positive. So, you know, great job on your part and everybody that was involved. And if, Mr. Chairman, if you're looking for any feedback, I mean, my opinion would be, if we've got at least some money sort of left, we sort of like hold it pretty tight just to see where we go in the next month, two, three, or whatever, because you just, you know, as we come out of this, you just don't know what may sort of pop up. So if that's, you know, if it has to be spent by the end of the fiscal year, then that's one thing, but if it doesn't have to be, you know, then maybe that's something we pursue later.
All right, and it sounds like we have that flexibility, if I understand correctly.
Yes, sir.
Yeah, I've heard really positive comments about the vaccination clinics that El Puente is holding as well. So those are definitely touching some, like you said, touched a lot of points. Great. Any other questions or comments?
Yes, Mr. Chairman. Ellie, these funds that we're talking about, that you used for 1,812 household assured, now that didn't have the same effect, I mean, it's not the same money as the emergency rental assistance, is that right? Or it is?
Correct.
It is separate. It's separate funding.
Okay, and we don't have anything on that at this point, do we? On the emergency rental assistance, how that's going, or, you know, I'm particularly interested in that because that's a separate item, and it's pretty much specific for emergency rental.
Rodney can give you the latest numbers on that.
Okay. But this number doesn't have that.
That's correct. That was prior to.
Most of the numbers are from November, December, and January, and then the current county program would begin in April.
Commissioner Shue, for the emergency rental assistance program, as of this morning, we had a little over 200 applicants that were successfully able to complete the application, and it totaled about $2.4 million of support that's being requested.
And did we ever get any additional funds other than the 6.5 or something like that? We were talking about an additional, maybe four or five million.
Yeah, so we have access to an additional $5 million from the state, and then we also have another opportunity for a direct allocation from the federal government, and that's probably around four to four and a half million dollars.
Okay. And you say we have 200 that's been approved, it's pretty much...
We have 200 that are currently being reviewed.
Okay.
So there's only been about 200,000 that is on the way out the door, and then another 2 million that's still pending.
Okay, so now, is there a deadline, a timeline for that program when it ends, or just when the funds is gone?
Through the end of the calendar year.
Yeah, so I want to encourage the viewing audience and everyone else that if you're struggling and having difficulties with your paying your rent and utilities and things like that, you need to go to the county website. Is it on the website yet, Rodney?
Yes.
Yeah, and use this money. It's provided by the federal and state government, and it needs to be used for those purposes. And so if you're struggling, put the application in and let DHS do their job. Thank you, Rodney.
And that kind of brings up another question. I know it's for rental assistance. What about folks that have been unable to make their mortgage payments? Those funds are available to assist them as well.
Yes, and there are additional funds coming down from the American Rescue Plan specifically for mortgages and mortgage assistance.
Right, right. And I just feel like, as you said, Commissioner Shue, there are a lot of folks out there that maybe are struggling, that are not aware of some of this assistance that's available. Is there anything we can do to promote that? I think it's a good thing.
Absolutely. It'd be a shame, you know, have all of those funds available, and the people not know about it, and therefore, they wouldn't get to use it.
Right.
And they keep on struggling, you know? And we've come out of a tumultuous-type event last year, and for them to continue to struggle when there's funds available, it ought to be a pretty easy process. I think you guys worked it out where it's pretty simple to go online and make the application, and, you know, if you meet the criteria, then you get some help and not have to struggle so much.
And I would think that maybe our financial institutions are probably pretty well-versed on this to assist their clients also. So hopefully, that will come to pass.
Rodney, do we know, I've had a couple of questions of people that have had a change of circumstances within the family, forcing them to move during this time. Will that help move someone from a family location to another location? Kind of the housing assistance for like first month's rent, last month's rents type of thing?
Yes, it will.
It will? Okay.
Yeah, if they meet the income requirements, they're able to be assisted with things like security deposit and some other moving expenses.
Okay, perfect. Thank you.
Okay, any other questions or comments?
Just one more question for clarity's sake. What is the income requirement?
It's 80% of the area median income.
Okay.
So it varies based on household size.
Just a comment that Rodney and Karen Calhoun and Laura Lipe and Debbie Brandon and Todd Shanley have done a fantastic job of getting this up, and their staffs as well, getting this up operational as quickly as they have. And like you said, the first week, it was just a huge success. The second week, Kasia and her group are doing a very good public relations outreach program as well to make sure everybody knows about it. So just wanted to make sure you guys understood, they reacted quickly, and they made it work very quick, so.
Yeah, I think the only thing I'd add is just for the public, reminder that they can access the application electronically, but they can also access it at all of our library locations, as well as our Veteran Services and Human Services locations, where they can use computers or get a paper application.
Okay, thank you very much. And we will move now to item 3.2, our Innovation and Technology Report. And we are happy to have Debbie Brandon with us virtually for that report.
Yes, thank you. Welcome to our first hybrid meeting. I'm behind the scenes running the conference call line. We still offer that as an opportunity for people to call in and listen to the meeting as well as all the other channels through the Communications and Outreach. Share my desktop here. Today is our first Innovation and Outreach Report of the spring, and I'm excited to be here. Our April's Employee Digital Book Club is Everyday People: Extraordinary Leadership: How to Make a Difference Regardless of Your Title, Role, or Authority. This book explores the idea that leadership is not defined by rank or authority, but achieved through everyday behaviors and actions. Leadership is a learned set of skills, and everyone has the power to obtain that competence and be a highly effective leader in any setting regardless of status. As we transition from the chaos of 2020 towards stabilization and rebuilding in 2021, it is more important than ever that we all take an inventory of how we can contribute to the betterment of our community. Everyday people, everyday leadership gives us the exact steps we can take and behaviors we can integrate to grow as leaders from right where we are. As they say in the book, "Leadership matters from wherever you do it." April is National County Government Month. The theme for this year, Celebration of National County Government Month, is demonstrating how counties help to improve people's lives every day and celebrating local government workers that are on the front lines of the coronavirus pandemic. The county's five strategic initiatives have been and are our guideposts as we work to provide vital services to our community. To elevate the awareness of county responsibilities, the National Association for Counties partnered with iCivics to create a full curriculum to educate students in grades 6 through 12 about the important role and functions of county government. iCivics is an innovative educational resource available to the community that helps explain county government operations. The curriculum, along with the online game Counties Work, help teachers and parents with teaching county government to their students and children. And you can find this at www.naco.org/i civics. We are one of 3,069 counties serving more than 300 million Americans to provide essential services to create healthy, safe, and vibrant communities. We provide social services, keep communities safe, foster economic opportunities, and much more. We take pride in our responsibility to protect and enhance the health, well-being, and safety of our residents in efficient and cost-effective ways. Counties matter, especially in supporting residents and businesses during the coronavirus pandemic. National County Government Month is designed to elevate awareness of county responsibilities, programs, and services. Here's a short video highlighting some of the Super Cabco work done across the county this year. And if you'll just pardon me for a second while I switch screens. We all remember the day the world stopped, but you kept going. You put yourself on the line for our benefit. You kept us safe. You kept us informed. You worked to keep us healthy. You put us first so we never lost access to resources or services. This incredibly difficult year tested us all. It also reminded us that public service is the foundation of all we do. To the Cabarrus County employees who never stopped, we honor you. Thank you for being there. Also, this is a quick dashboard, since you asked earlier, on the emergency rental assistance program. We presented this in order to be able to give real-time updates to Rodney and his team as this money was being distributed. Switch back. The previous video was created by our Communications and Outreach Department. This department works year-round, like every month is County Government Month. They promote citizen awareness and engagement through innovative programming and communication channels. Today, we have a communications specialist, Hannah Lightsey, to join us from that department to tell us a little bit more about their department.
Thanks, Debbie, for allowing us this opportunity. On behalf of Communications and Outreach, we are grateful to be able to talk a little bit about what we've done this year. When people think of communications, a lot of them think talking. I've actually had people ask me before if that's what I do all day, is make phone calls. But that's not what I or we do. Our department encompasses many things: storytelling, broadcasting, design, public relations, education, and so much more. We play roles, large and small, in many county projects. In a normal world, that includes using words, images, and strategy to tell citizens about our amazing programs and services. But throw COVID-19 into the mix, and we're doing all that and much more. Within the last year, we've had to keep our community informed on all of the important pandemic information. Most departments were forced to adapt, and many of them needed our help to make that happen. The departments in our county do such incredible work every single day, and it's our highest honor to help amplify those things and tell their important stories. As a team, we had a thorough discussion about what we're going to do for this presentation, and we ultimately decided to go to the people we've worked so closely with throughout this pandemic to get their thoughts. And here's what they had to say. I'll turn it over to Debbie so she can play this video for us.
We're now going to go to the county's email inbox to answer a question that John asked on social media about the best source for local information on the coronavirus.
I'm Dr. Russell Suda. I'm the medical director for the Cabarrus Health Alliance.
I sing every day. I sing with more joy. I'm more appreciative of the ability to take a deep breath.
If you only take away one message, remember to stay home and stay healthy. We're asking folks in Cabarrus County to add this frame to your Facebook profiles.
Remember the three W's.
We're face covering when you're around others.
And social distancing isn't possible.
Wait at least six feet apart when standing in line.
And wash your hands frequently, and for at least 20 seconds, with soap and water.
Communications and Outreach is essential, and I say that as an essential part of the community and the service that the county provides as a community partner. It's essential to making sure that, you know, our community is getting the information that they need to know in a timely manner from a reliable source.
The Communications and Outreach Department makes it easy for us to do our jobs and show what we're doing for the Cabarrus County citizens.
The value for us, especially during this pandemic, is being able to get a timely message out, again, that is relevant and attractive.
People learn things through just this variety of platforms, and that variety of platforms is ever-changing. It's important to us for people to know what we're doing and to get input and have the public involved in our processes, which it is. It's very important, and we have to reach them on that variety of platforms. And so with our Communications Department, both the strategy and the talents match to that.
It would not have been possible to put this event together without the creativity and the hard work of our communications team.
When we started, you know, having to work on the stay-at-home order and general prevention messaging, you know, the communications team was at the table with us, talking about the best strategy to do that, the different outlets that we could utilize.
Human resources and other departments are often considered the content experts for the messages we need to put out, but we're certainly not the communications expert. We rely on the Communications and Outreach team to help us craft messages that are appropriate in length and tone for our various audiences.
The team is really good at understanding what is the general public, what do they need to know, and how can that information be best delivered?
It isn't just how you do it, it's what you do, so that it attracts that interest and meets that overall larger intent.
Department of Social Services, working with the people in need in our community, the parks, there's just so many good things going on in Cabarrus County, and your outreach program does a great job of telling people, and we hope that they continue for many, many years to come because Cabarrus County has a wonderful story to tell.
We appreciate all of the kind words from our friends in this video, and thank you all for this opportunity to share a little bit about what we do. We're very much looking forward to celebrating Cabarrus and our employees throughout County Government Month in April. And if our viewers aren't already, be sure to follow us on social media and on YouTube @CabarrusCounty to read and watch more stories that we'll be putting out about our people and the amazing work they do each day. Thank you all for your time.
Thank you.
Thank you, Hannah, and the entire Communications and Outreach team. When I asked them to be the present at this Innovation Report, they already had their hands full, but they were willing to jump in, and I thought it was appropriate to highlight all the hard work that goes on behind the scenes for all the programs and services that happened here in Cabarrus County.
Thank you. Thank you for that report, Debbie, and thank you to Communications and Outreach. We don't always call them by name, but that's who we're talking about when we say people need to understand and know about this rental assistance program and those funds that are available, and we're constantly doing that. You know, one year ago, when we started meeting virtually, it was the folks in that department that we said, you need to figure out how to get this on television, and you need to figure out how to make sure that all of us know how to operate computers and Microsoft Teams. And so between IT and Communications and Outreach, they have had a tremendous volume of work this past year, and they've done a tremendous job at it. And I think that, you know, I remember back when our first stay-at-home order, when we were really understanding what we were dealing with, that was held in this room, along with all of our municipalities, with Communications and Outreach kind of coordinating that for the county and for everyone else as well. So you certainly do make a big impact, and we certainly do appreciate it.
Thanks so much, Steve.
I think the big thing is that we call over and ask them to do so much stuff, and the first thing I hear is, well, that's not in our work plan. That's not in our work plan. So a good portion of what they do is not in their work plan, but they react quickly, and most of the time with smiles on their face. Hannah's always got a smile on her face.
Well, that's what keeps things so exciting. You know, departments always lean on us, and we definitely have a very passionate group of people over there. over there, and they love to share stories and, you know, promote the resources and initiatives that we offer here. We have a really great team, and I'm fortunate to be on it, so.
Very hard to believe that the group of five commissioners would ever decide on something and then say, hey, y'all need to figure out how to do that. I mean, we don't do that, do we? You guys do a tremendous, tremendous job. And one of the things, I get a nice little chuckle about, after every meeting, I go check social media, my Twitter feed, and I get a nice recap of everything we've talked about in the meeting, and sometimes it's a nice reminder. If we've had a longer meeting, something we talked about early on that kind of, oh, yeah, I forgot we talked about that.
Absolutely.
You know, whoever does that, you guys do a tremendous job of just doing a quick summary so if people really want to hit the highlights and know what we do in our meetings, that's the best way to do it. So thank you for all your hard work.
You're more than welcome. Happy to do it.
Okay. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay. And I think, Debbie, you're finished. She just went off the screen, so I'm assuming so. So we move now to discussion items for action. First up, from Active Living in Parks, we're happy to have Londa Strong to talk to us about Park and Recreation Trust Fund Grant Application.
Thank you all for allowing me to be here today. Good to see people. Besides the same ones every day.
Likewise.
Speaking of communications, I put this little magazine beside of the commissioners and Mr. Downs. This is the North Carolina Recreation and Park Association's quarterly magazine, and the Active Living in Parks Department was featured this month. I got some hot off the press. These haven't even been sent out yet, so I could bring them to you all today. And there's an article in there that highlights our department, and Joshua Kaufman, who is the park manager at Camp Spencer and is the liaison from our department to the communications team, is the one that wrote the article, and he did a super job. And he has really grown, working with them, on his Facebook posts, his Instagram, and articles and things like this. And that's, we have other articles in there, too, not just the highlights, so he did a great job. Now, what I'm here for. Sorry, thank you for letting me throw that in there. The Park and Recreation Trust Fund Grant is available most every year. Some years it's not. It's a state-funded grant, and we are looking at the 13 acres adjacent to, or 13 acres adjacent to Rob Wallace Park that we have had our eye on since the beginning. It's kind of cut off from the other property because of a creek, and the other property, I think they're looking at to sell for development houses. And we've been working with the property owner for, ever since we've had that property, trying to acquire that property. Those 13 acres there, Lauren has pulled that up. If you were driving into the park and go down the hill to the overflow parking lot, on your left over on that property boundary is where those 13 acres are. There's maybe right at 50% of it's in floodplain, so it's not suitable for development houses and things like that. So that was one of the reasons that we were looking at it. It's great, heavily wooded. We're looking at just trails, educational signs. The property owner has a thought, I won't say a request, a thought in on having a butterfly trail, something in memory of one of her, one of their nephews. So we talked with them about that. We've had two appraisals done, as you saw in the information, one for $117,000 and one for $345,000. It's a huge difference, tax values not on either one of those. I talked with the consultants through Recreation Resource Services at NC State, and they said that we didn't have to take either one. You know, we could do a middle-of-the-road, whatever we felt comfortable with, what it's going to appraise for. Obviously, that's way off there, but if the property owner will sell it to us at a reduced price, which they have agreed to, we can use their reduction as our match. So as an example of the $200,000, they'll sell it to us for $100,000, and that $100,000 would be our match, so there would actually be no money out of our pocket to get those 13 acres. May 3rd is the deadline, and I have to thank Ms. Linker for allowing me to get this in at the last moment. I missed the date, and so we were wanting to get approval for applying for this grant. Just because we're applying for the acquisition doesn't mean that we'll get it. There have been, oh, somewhere around $20 million worth of projects requests over the last several years for a small amount of money. However, there is much more money this year than they've had in a long time, so we have a much better opportunity to get this. Just kind of skimmed. Does anybody have any questions on what was written?
This is adjacent to where?
Rob Wallace Park. I'm sorry, I thought I said that. Maybe I didn't.
You may have, I may have missed it.
Probably didn't hear from my map.
Yeah, I was just trying to look on the map.
So that's what we need, is approval to apply for this grant.
And it says in our notes, but just to reiterate for the general public, if grant money is used, it will forever be a park.
That is correct, in perpetuity.
We can't deem it for another use. Nobody can come grab it for another use. It will be part of Rob Wallace Park.
That is correct. And we received some Park and Recreation Trust Fund money when we built Rob Wallace, Phase One of Rob Wallace. So there's, that's always a plus when trying to get additional money. In perpetuity, one of the consultants told me the other day that they were all going to have T-shirts made that say, perpetuity is a very long time.
And I think in this case, that's a very good thing, for sure.
Any questions?
I would say that we would require that you are successful in this endeavor, if that would make any difference.
It took three times when we got the original grant at Rob Wallace, three cycles. And even the deadline is May 3rd, but they won't make their announcements until late summer, early fall.
Right. Great.
If for some reason we had to purchase that land now, we could ask for a waiver of which we could go ahead and purchase the property and then apply through this cycle or the next cycle. And again, there's no guarantee, even if they approve the waiver to purchase ahead of time, there's no guarantee that you'll get the money.
Right.
But that's where we are.
So for us to include this on, to approve this on our regular meeting agenda still gives you the time you need to get that accomplished. Great. Any other questions for Londa? All right. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay. We move now to Item 4.2, which is our appointments to boards and committees. You all have that full report in front of you, and I think Lauren had sent that out in advance as well. If anyone has any questions or comments about any of those proposed appointments. Okay. Hearing none, we'll move to Item 4.3 from the Board of Elections. We're glad to have Carol Soules to talk about a HAVA grant. And the first, before you even make your presentation, I'm anxiously awaiting, in that total thing, nowhere could I find where it said what HAVA stood for.
Help America Vote Act.
Okay. Maybe I missed it, but I'm glad to know that. Welcome.
Yes, HAVA is, I mean, we live and breathe HAVA. It's the Help America Vote Act. That governs certain IDs that have to be shown, and that's where we've gotten funds through the years. That, in fact, I think those were the funds that initially purchased the voting equipment back in 2006. We were awarded, well, the state was awarded a huge amount, and they decided, based on the different tiers, how much each county would get. We used $72,000 and a little more than that for things throughout this last election. We purchased tabletop shields for each precinct. We purchased cleaning supplies and the extra absentee envelopes that we had to use for the huge amount of absentees we had. So we have, then, after the election, they decided to disperse more funds. So our grant is for $55,896.13. That's what Cabarrus County will receive. It has to be either spent or encumbered by the end of June. And what we propose to use our funds for are new hand scanners. The ones we currently use at the polls, it's just verifying that the ballot, that the voter is getting the correct ballot. You'll see them, you'll see them use the hand scanner on their application to vote and then the ballot. And all that's doing is making sure they have the right ballot. So that is a 1D hand scanner. But since photo ID was a constitutional amendment, we will have photo ID eventually. I think the lawsuits that are going through is just how they're going to implement it, but we will have it. So we want to purchase hand scanners that are 2D, which will be able to read that barcode on a driver's license and hopefully populate it so we'll make sure we have the correct voter.
Great. Excellent. That's getting the right ballots, a pretty important part of the process.
Especially in a primary.
Yes, yes, absolutely.
As you all can attest.
Right. Yes, all of us have been in those primaries. So yes, indeed. Anybody have any questions for Carol?
Will those scanners be at each precinct or just strictly for early voting?
No, they will be at every precinct. In fact, what we'll have to do, currently, we only use one per precinct because we have one table where you get ballots. When we're using photo ID, there will be a hand scanner at each computer because they'll be looking at that for each voter. So there'll probably, there'll be multiple hand scanners at each precinct.
Is this enough to cover all those, or?
I think so, because I'm still looking at two different kinds. I have to get the software approved from the state. And there's one that we were looking at that they're not making anymore, so there's one that has to be used with a tablet. I really would like one that could stand alone, so we're still going back and forth.
Right.
And it sounds like you're on a pretty tight timeline if it has to be spent by the end of the year, but our, I mean, we're showing this on our normal agenda in two weeks, and that's... Same question we just asked Londa. Does that give you enough time?
Yes.
Okay.
Because this, actually, the funds, it's a reimbursement, so we have to spend it, but then we get reimbursed.
Okay. Got you.
Are these scanners portable for curbside voting?
There is, well, the thing with that would be, see, typically, when we don't take a tablet, you know, when they check in the person, they bring the application back inside because the computer's inside.
Okay. Didn't know if that would speed up the, you know, the outside.
Well, the next thing we're going to talk about next month is a new ADA piece of equipment, and hopefully that could be able to be taken to the car.
Perfect.
Okay. Any other questions? All right. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay. We move now to Item 4.4 from EMS, Renewal of Non-Emergency Transport Franchise Agreement with American TransMed. And we have Jimmy Lentz with us virtually to talk about that. Welcome, sir.
Thank you, sir. Thank you for the opportunity to be attending this meeting virtually because I had a pretty tight afternoon, but this works great. The end of this fiscal year, the end of June, the current franchise agreement with American TransMed, which was a three-year agreement, will be expiring. Our intent would be to renew that agreement for another three years with TransMed. TransMed has been active in Cabarrus County under franchise agreements with our organization since 2015. And just to say, those six years have been uneventful would somewhat be an understatement. The correspondence with TransMed, the quality of service they provide here, and just the service they provide on a non-emergency basis to the citizens of Cabarrus County has really been good, and so our intent would be to renew that. While we're coming before you, and the CEO, Mr. Greg Kirby, is monitoring this meeting. I don't know if he has the capability. I think he's driving, so I'm not sure if his capability is to interact, but he is monitoring this meeting this afternoon. So our intent would be to start the process, and Mr. Cook, please correct me if I'm wrong. It has to be read or heard at two public hearings. Our intent would be to do it at April and May, and then have everything in place when the current agreement expires for the new one to kick in. So that's the reason we come before you this afternoon and be certainly happy to answer any questions and take any confirmation from Mr. Cook on the double reading.
That is correct. That's the state law.
Well, you answered my primary question upfront when you said three-year contract, because I declare it feels like they come every year.
Yes, sir. The first few years, we did do it annually.
Okay.
But as our comfort with the service they provided. Just to elaborate a little bit, too, on some of the discussion and kind of piggyback on some of the previous discussion, they've been very active with Atrium Health and the COVID situation. They've been providing wheelchair transports and obviously stretcher transports for Cabarrus County in relation with COVID and Atrium Health. So it's a good organization. They work well with several different entities within the county, and our intent would be to renew for another three years.
Jimmy, can you explain? You touched on it just then, but what is non-emergency transportation?
Non-emergency transportation handles anything scheduled with doctor's offices, discharges from medical facilities, and just basically stuff that is not 911 response. We handle all the emergent 911 response that comes through the county. The pre-scheduled stretcher transport is what American TransMed handles. And like I said, have been doing it very successfully in Cabarrus County since 2015. They were an established company before 2015, just not active within our county, and they've been here now for six years.
Okay. Anybody else have questions for Jimmy? My compliments on that beautiful building in the background.
Mr. Miller provided that to us, and we're obviously very proud and very excited about it, and we want it out anytime we can get it. So yes, sir, thank you.
Great. Okay. Any other questions? Thank you. Okay. We move now to Item 4.5 from Finance, Cares Fund Budget Amendment and Project Ordinance. We're glad to have Wendy Hagler with us for that discussion.
Hello. Good afternoon. The county received CARES Act funds to use for COVID-19-related expenditures, and the interest earned on the money we received upfront is also required to be spent on COVID-19-related expenditures. So this budget amendment will recognize that interest, and then we plan to use the money for COVID-related health claims. The second part of this agenda item is to update the special revenue project ordinance part of this agenda item is to update the special revenue project ordinance to include the emergency rental assistance money that we received in January. And the budget amendment was done in February. And this just updates the project ordinance to include the interest and the emergency rental assistance funds.
Okay, any questions for Wendy? I wish I were smart enough to ask a question about that. Okay, then we'll move to the next item. Also, Wendy's going to cover fire district budget amendment.
Yes, this budget amendment will increase the fire district's current property tax collections as well as increase the property, or the related district's turnover. As with the county's property taxes, the property taxes for the fire districts is also coming in over budget. So this will just recognize those additional revenues and expenditures so we can turn over those funds to the fire districts.
Okay, any questions on that one? Okay, and then Wendy also has the next one, update of capital project fund budgets and related project ordinances.
There were several projects closed in the construction and renovation fund. And this project ordinance and budget amendment will close those, I guess, projects that are complete. And then I'm going to let Rodney Harris speak to the second portion of this agenda item.
Thank you. So since this one is a larger budget amendment, we wanted to touch on one piece of it to make sure that you're aware. So we're going to go back to 2009. The state repealed the Article 44 sales tax. And in exchange for that, they took some local Medicaid expenses from local governments. And what they said at the time is that they would hold us harmless for that change. And so that means that each year, if the sales tax revenues exceed the Medicaid expenses, we get a refund back from the state. So that came in last month, about $3 million over budget. And we typically would either roll that to fund balance, or it would be used for one-time expenses. What we're proposing in this agenda item is that we use that to go towards the future construction of a mental health facility.
Okay, questions on that item?
Well, I mean, that begs a question. I mean, we are proposing to build a mental health facility sometime in the future?
Yeah, we covered that at the board retreat. It is currently tentatively planned for FY '24. It is sort of when it would be funded through debt. This would allow us to use cash instead.
Okay. Was that Saturday about 2:30?
It was.
Okay. Well, that's why I didn't remember. No, that does ring a bell. But so, okay.
Yeah, so there'll be a lot, a lot more discussion on that as we get closer. We just wanted to make sure, since this was excess funds, that we went ahead and put it in place so that we would have it when we're ready to go. As you know, there's, there's one facility in the county, and that's 16 beds for the entire county.
Right.
So we need to start addressing that as much as we can. And this was a good opportunity with the, this, these funds to go ahead and put them aside now instead of spending them on smaller projects to go and have that one.
And the good news is, if we do go ahead and put this into that project, the board always has the ability to change that appropriation in the future.
Yep.
Right. This is certainly a topic for, for me, of very, very high interest. And we've had many discussions about it over, over the last number of years. I think those have somewhat escalated over, over the past year as we learned some additional things. And, and we've had some discussions previously, and certainly will have some in the future. County manager and I joined with folks from Atrium as well as from the Cabarrus Health Alliance on a visit to Guilford County. I guess it's been a year ago now. It's, our, our last year's been somewhat disruptive. It's hard to, to keep it straight. But that has, is a project that they are working on there. I think they've been somewhat delayed by COVID, but they are actually building two facilities there, one for adolescents and youth, and one for adults. And so, so they're, along with their MCO, LME in, in that, that area is involved in it as well. And so we certainly have had those discussions here. And, and we'll have, I think, a lot of updates as, as we go along on that, as those discussions continue. Any other questions for Rodney? Okay, thank you, sir. Okay, we move now to item 4.8 from Human Resources, Personnel Ordinance Changes. We are glad to have Lundie Covington with us to talk about those.
Thank you. And I have Ashley Allen, who is also available virtually. So if you have any questions, we also have access to her, and she might share an example with you. So the changes I'm bringing to you today, three of the four are tied to the compression study that we presented to you at the budget retreat. We had talked about a few items we needed to come back and shore up in our personnel ordinance to hopefully avoid the recurrence of continuing wage compression. So I'm going to kind of walk you through the four. As far as the materials, you have a little blurb on each of the four changes. And then following that, you have our current ordinance language. And then I'm going to ask Lauren if she will, as we get to each one, to kind of blow up the proposed language because I think that's really the relevant part you'll, you'll want to see. So the first area is pay for internal promotions. And what we are hoping to do there is try to be more on par with our internal promotions opposed to people we bring in externally. So the language we would like to add there is in that highlighted section below, that increases will be calculated based on credit for experience and education, which is what we do with our new employee hires, and that any increases that exceed the 25th percentile of the range must be approved by the county manager. That language is also in that section. So we're just trying to mirror it up a little bit more and be a little more fair with our internal folks. So any questions on that one before I move on?
So I'm assuming this, this will help us to avoid those compression issues in the future that we run into quite frequently?
That is the goal because now we do a limited 5% for any one internal. Whereas if we're hiring somebody externally, we much more match that up to a market appropriate offer. So this will allow that same flexibility for us to look at their education and experience they're bringing forward to that new position. So the second area, we wanted to talk about reclassifications. And this is something we brought to you several years ago, actually. And at that point, we made a change to that section, and we removed a 5% automatic reclassification adjustment. And we inserted at that time something that was intended to be much more market-driven. And practice what that's done. It's given around a 3% merit or wage increase for the people going through the salary study versus the old 5%. So it was a better solution financially, but it has led to compression. Our ranges are set at 5% apart. So by doing something less than that, we're just kind of circling back and exacerbating that problem every time we, we have done an increase. So what we're asking to do there is just make that a, a much simpler process as well. The proposed language there is when a class of positions is assigned to a higher salary range, employees in those positions shall, shall receive an increase to move them to the same range placement within the new grade. What that would do is help with those who move one range, but also those who move more than one. We've noticed that in several studies. It's not very often that we have people who move multiple ranges. But when that happens, we really are putting that person at a disadvantage with a small 3% move. So Ashley did prepare an example. If you'd like, we can pull that up and let you see that real quickly, just to kind of see what that looks like. Ashley, are you available to jump on and explain?
Hey, I'm here. Can you hear me okay?
Yes, ma'am.
Will the example be pulled up? I'm sorry.
I think Lauren's working on that. We're asking her to do a lot of toggling back and forth today.
Okay. Okay, so in this example, you have somebody who is in a grade 14. Oh, hold on a second. I'm getting a lot of feedback. Let's see if the, somebody in a grade 14 here who, let's say in the market study, our consultant suggested that they were moved to a grade 15. Over the past few years, we've just been doing about a 3% for the market studies. So what happens is that an employee who is currently at the 25th percentile in a grade 14, where they were hired and based on education and experience, but the market indicates that they should be paid higher in a higher grade. If we apply 3%, that only takes this employee to 2101, which in grade 15 is less than the 25th percentile. So basically, we're not moving them to the same placement in the new range. And so what that does, of course, is that we're not paying close to market where they should be. But also, if we're trying to hire in other folks with education and experience in that role, we're having difficulty doing that because we have to offer them, you know, less money because we don't want to put them over our current, currently hired, experienced people. So I hope I explained that. Okay, if we do 5%, it moves them exactly to the current placement that they are in in their new range. So if somebody was at the 25th percentile in a grade 14, if we do 5%, it moves them to the 25th percentile in the grade 15.
Hopefully, that example helps. But if you have questions on that issue, we can address them. But again, we're trying to do things to not bring the issue back to you with compression. So if we put in a few of these practices, we feel like we'll be in better shape going forward. So the third item, also related to compression, is actually the market study cycle. And right now, we do three-year reviews. We've basically taken our county positions and split them into three groups. So we have a group that's public safety, which would encompass the sheriff's department, EMS, fire safety, that group. We have human services, which is basically all of the human services departments, including transportation. And then we have a third group, which is all other. So we've been going through in a three-year cycle. What we would like to propose at this point is we stretch that out and go to a four-year process, with that fourth year being reserved for an internal review, such as we're doing this year. What that would mean is each of the job groups would be reviewed once every four years, or at the, as their interval comes around. But we would use that intervening year to do a check on internal equity, just to make sure that the fixes we've tried to put in place are doing what we expect them to do with compression. Or if we have some needs, bring them to you that year. It's a much smaller project. That also gives us the opportunity to keep looking at hot jobs. If something comes due sooner than their four-year cycle, for example, in the last study, we had a lot of movement needs for IT. The IT field had really taken off. So we wouldn't want to wait necessarily four years if we are starting to lose people because of market pricing. So we would maybe want to bring that forward a little earlier. But other than those exceptional circumstances, we would be on a four-year cycle. So the language there is basically just asking to increase that by adding in a review cycle of not less than four years. So does that make sense? And again, the hope was that we could use that as kind of that reset process. We would also like to consider each three-year group with the same rules and not change midstream. So if there's anything that needs to be adjusted about our processes, such as we're doing this year, we catch that in that fourth year before we set off on the next group of salary study reviews. Questions on that one?
Just generally speaking, do you think the budget impact with that would be basically the same? You're spreading out how long you're going to do it, but there's probably be, because it's a little longer, there's a little more volatility. So at the end of the day, is it going to, dollars-wise to the, to the budget, do you think? I mean, I'm asking to speculate, but you're, you're the expert.
I think it's, I think it's really hard to say what we would see because we've certainly done studies where we've had very little movement overall, just very few positions that moved. But then we've had other cycles where we really did have more. But I think some of the other things we're doing hopefully mitigate that as well by keeping in a small amount of COLA, by looking at things internally and doing compression this year to try to get people at a better position. You know, I feel like some of the things, as Ashley said, if we can make fair, solid offers coming in, maybe we won't be behind the market. So that's our hope. But again, we feel like this is a better strategy to at least address it. And the goal would be to not bring you as much at any one time. That's why we split it into thirds to start with. We used to do reviews every other year. And it was every other year but all positions. So that we knew was a huge burden to the board. So this is an effort to try to spread it out a little bit further and allow that reset year.
I think that's a good approach. I mean, because I would imagine you currently, you're doing a reset year and the third, all at the same time. So at least now, you sort of at least get to, to use your expertise and evaluate while not trying to simultaneously do that, that other group. So, yeah, I mean, that to me seems reasonable.
Okay. Well, the fourth area is not related. It actually does have to do with compensation as well, though. So we've noticed that our current merit process doesn't work very well for our seasonal employees in the active living department. I hate Londa stepped out. She also helped us with this. So what we are proposing there is just adding a new section to deal with those seasonal employees, giving them a 2% or a 3%. It's not very meaningful if we're trying to re-recruit them to come back. So we want to make the process very simple for those folks that are here with us for the season, a much more straightforward performance evaluation tool versus measuring them on 16 different attributes when they're here for two or three months. It's very simple. But what we're also trying to do is lock in a, an increase that will be maybe more meaningful to them. Monetarily, we, we feel like it shakes out almost the same whether you're doing a 4% or a 2.5% if you're looking at a $10 an hour employee wage. And these positions are not $15 an hour. They're, they're below that. So what we're proposing is after the evaluation process, again, very much simplified, then those who are performing very, very, very well, and that should be a few, would get a 50% and 50 cents increase if they come back the following year. Those that are probably in the average, you know, they're doing well. We'd like to give them some increase. They were very competent in their role. So kind of that above average, they would get a 25 cent increase. Those that are performing at the minimum would come back at the rate they left at. And those who are not performing well would not be invited back. So that's kind of the simplification there. And Ashley, if, if you're able, and Lauren, if you can pull it up, let's just show them real quickly what the new evaluation tool looks like so you can kind of get a feel for that. So again, we're just trying to make it simpler for these positions that are with us six months or less of the year.
Yes, so the current evaluation has, like Lundie said, had 16 competencies on it. And it also required a signature from the employee. And a lot of times, you know, they're leaving pretty quickly to go back to school or what have you. And so it's been a challenge to finish up these evaluations and get them in at the end of the season. So what we did was we just created a simple version of the evaluation that's also basically our personnel status report, all in one. So it now has only five competencies, kind of the five most important things you would look for probably in a seasonal employee, attendance, work quality, adherence to policies, and our personal skills and safety. And then we just basically are asking for the park managers to, to rate them, to recommend them for reemployment, to put what their current salary is. And you can kind of see the score up there. It's one through three is what they're allowed to, what they can rate them. And if they got, all exceeds expectations, they're probably going to get that 50 cent an hour raise for the next season. And hopefully, they'll come back and join us. And, and so the, the park manager can kind of let, tell the employee about this or email it, but it doesn't require their signature. And so it's going to hopefully help our park manager a lot with our seasonal employees and keep the, the good ones coming back.
So if no further questions, that's the four areas we would like to do updates on at this time.
Great. Additional questions for Lundie? It all makes a great deal of sense to, to me. And certainly, being one of those folks that employs a lot of part-time people, seasonally, I can see the advantage in that because it's, you, you want those people to come back for the next, next summer.
Exactly. They're trained. They know the job. If we can woo them back versus having them go to another employer, that's a good thing for us.
Exactly. And we, and even though we pay them more, we save money overall.
Exactly.
For sure. Okay, thank you. Okay, we move now to item 4.9. We're happy to have Kelly Sifford with us to talk about budget amendment for construction standards. Welcome.
Thank you. It's good to see you all. So this year, we have had a fairly large increase in sales of permits. As you all know, there's a lot of construction going on. Last check I had, we were about 30% up on single family. So as a result of that, we have some additional revenues that we'll be collecting this year. So what we are proposing is to budget some of those revenues now and put those into vehicle purchases, bank fees that have been generated in addition to the normal because we forced everybody to start paying online. So we have a lot more bank fees than we were anticipating originally. Uniforms and consulting services for improvements in the Acela software and other technological needs. So that is what we are requesting to do with those additional funds. We're requesting to increase the revenue projection by $490,100. And we have the associated cost there for that. And we are asking that you suspend the rules because if you wish to do this, we would like to go ahead and get the trucks ordered as soon as possible.
As you know, these, these funds are, are to remain in the program. The fee schedule is set to, to run the operations. They can't, we can't take them and move them over to another department. By going ahead and making the changes now and purchasing those vehicles, those purchases will stay out of next year's budget. So we're going to go ahead and do them now with these extra revenues here, if you, if you allow us to do so.
And that would be for non-new vehicles?
Right. And then some of the other IT program, programmatic changes. And that is to improve the process for our staff and even more so for the public who are, who is using the system. the system.
Yes, we are currently working with Acela on some notifications to contractors. We have some internal needs to create some more automated things in the system, so we're out working on all of those, and, you know, obviously, our IT staff is stretched quite far at this point, so we're trying to get some help from Acela to do some of these things.
Okay, questions for Kelly?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, I do have a question. Kelly, a number of years ago, you may remember that we were absorbing a lot of cost for bank fees.
Correct.
And I thought that we had made a change to where that if a person paid by debit or credit card, where there was a fee, that we added that to the bill. Did we not do that?
I don't.
Pam, listen.
Yeah, there are some areas, we were gradually doing that. There are some areas that the public is paying the fee upfront if they're using cards.
But those were absorbed in the fee study, so theoretically, they're paying us to pay the bill.
Right.
So it's not.
So it doesn't show on their credit card fee or whatever, but it was absorbed into the calculation of those permit fees.
So I guess I'm confused a little bit on it. So are we absorbing it, or is the taxpayer absorbing it?
No, the person paying.
Because obviously, the bank's charging it. The bank's charging it.
Right.
But who's paying it? Are we paying it, or is the taxpayer?
We are collecting, so we are paying it, but the fee study that we did, that we presented to you, I guess it was almost two years ago now, that included bank fees as part of the cost. We did slightly under budget last year to begin with, but then when we went with completely online forced, you know, where people before were coming in with checks or cash or whatever, you know, we went completely to that. It increased our cost, but it's covered in the sales still, so it's a pass-through cost, for lack of a better term. We're charging it in that fee for their permit, and we're paying it.
Okay.
Does that clarify it enough?
Yeah, it does, because I remember, you know, when we talked about that, I'd say, wow, you know, that's a lot for bank fees, but now it's a lot, still a lot. I think it was like $70,000 or $75,000 then, and now we're looking at $100,000-plus for bank fees.
Yes.
We in the wrong business today.
Yes, but we, like I said, it's basically a pass-through cost because we did calculate that in the fee study as part of the permit fee.
Okay. I appreciate you doing that. Thank you, Kelly.
Thank you.
Great. Any other questions?
Just on the inspection fees, could you just clarify that from my knowledge on that?
Absolutely. So the inspection fees are all based on, so that's all permits that we have sold. That's the only revenues that go into that. So what you're seeing there is fully the permits that we sell. So the permits that we sell, to go back to the fee study because you weren't here when that went on, we brought in a consultant who helped us determine for each type of permit that somebody might pull, how much time does the county have in that business? How much time does it take us to process that application? How much time does it take us for each inspection? And when I say each inspection, that's an assumed number of inspections. So, you know, for a typical electrical permit, you know, for residential, you probably have two inspections. If they failed it, you might have a couple more. We do have something built in there for a lot of repeated fails. Same thing with commercial, you know, we know that there's going to be more, so that is all built into the cost of that permit. So when, and we went to blanket permits at the same time, so when a contractor comes in and pulls his permit, it creates the electrical, the plumbing, and the mechanical based on who he told us is going to be doing the work for him. And so he pays that total fee, and that covers all of that service all the way through till we issue a CO to that person. Does that help?
And previously, you had to do each one of those individually, right?
Each one of those were done individually by the, so the general contractor would come in and pull his, and then each trade would come in and pull theirs, and the trades could be done online, and, you know, it was a bit simpler, but this kind of gets everything lined up a little easier, and once we get the full automation that we want, it will make it a lot easier for everybody. But it's easier for the, for the subs now, and you can probably speak to this one, but, you know, the general comes in and pulls all that, and it's all set up, and then they just say, this is your permit.
The department pays for itself. There are no general fund that's coming to it directly. It's all fee-generated, and we try to make sure that we keep the fees appropriate level, that we're not charging too much and carrying a huge fund balance on the other side. First of all, the statutes don't allow us to do that, but so we'll do those studies periodically to make sure we're still in line, and if the revenues start coming in a little lower, then we'll study it even quicker, but for the most part, as you can see. So the extra revenues that are coming in are not because our fees are too high, it's just because the number of permits that are getting generated right now, so.
Well, and also, one of the things that came out of the fee study to begin with is before, the commercial was a little high and the residential was a little low, and so those were adjusted out. Well, a lot of what we have sold are residential permits this year, so, you know, it's kind of hard to follow all of it, but it is an increase in sales.
And there's more to go.
And I do have one more question, too, Kelly. With the influx of 30% growth, obviously, we hired new people. That was part of the rate change. Are we being able to provide a quick turnaround to get the inspections and things done with the new personnel and then offset it with 30% growth?
The inspections, yes, we are generally next day unless there's an issue. We're about to hire two more. Where we have kind of gotten into a situation that we're really working people to death as the permit associates, we were in the process after going to blanket permits to automating some of that, and then the pandemic hit, and so IT kind of got, you know, derailed on their part of being able to help us get to where we wanted to go with that. So we're back on that, trying to get that solved, but we did bring in a temp, which we do have obviously money for, to help with that, and she's done an absolute bang-up job catching up and getting ready and moving us along. And so the permitting associate, that getting the actual permits produced has been the hardest part for us during this process, because we really had to change a lot of what we were doing. There's a lot of exchange through emails, you know, to get all of the documents in place that need to be there, whereas before, when you were sitting in front of somebody, you could say, okay, hand me this, hand me that, and now you're having that email back and forth, okay, I need this, I need that, you know, so. But we're getting there, and we're making those improvements every day, and I think pretty close to getting where we need to be with all of that.
That's great, and then I just have one, and this is probably for Kyle. I don't know whether Kyle's with us on.
Yeah, Kyle's on vacation.
Well, good, he needs to rest.
Yes, he does.
He's a hard-working fellow.
He's high-stroke.
Well, and that is in reference to the Cabarrus Avenue location. Are we getting anywhere near to getting, moving in that for infrastructure asset management?
Yeah, in fact, we're doing a walkthrough at the end of the week, I believe, or early next week.
The only reason I ask that is because with the added personnel, and of course, I know they don't stay in the building.
Right.
But still, yet, you know, as you grow, your building's got to grow, and we've prepared for that with the new facility, but I just wonder whether we're in that facility or how close we are.
They are in there. They're in there now, they just haven't moved, and we finally moved everything out of the old building now, so we took Commissioner Strang on a tour there. So, you know, we're open to taking you over there as well and see what they've done, and next month, we'll be bringing you an agenda item to pass the existing building onto the city of Concord.
Good, great. Thanks, that's a good report.
Well, for whatever, for what it's worth, we, Cabarrus County has a good reputation out in the GC community, so there's nothing better when, if I'm out talking to people that have no idea that I have any connection to Cabarrus County whatsoever, and I'll ask them, well, how was the permit process, or this, that, and the other, and we do have a good reputation, so.
That's great to hear.
Thanks for all your hard work. I know it's a tough juggling act, and the demand is, I mean, we heard, what was the demographic study we got at the retreat? I mean, it's not going to change, and when she says residential permits have clicked up, does anybody else think school seats, or is that just me, because we're sitting here?
That's what I think every time.
Yeah, yeah. So, and a lot of that, it's been with the help of you as the board allowing us to put those two additional inspectors in the budget each year, and if the demand's there, we'll hire. If not, we won't, and sometimes they carry forward, and sometimes the demand grows during that budget year, and if we wait till the next budget year to get another one approved, we're way behind, so it allows us the flexibility to react quickly.
And that has been so helpful over the years to be able to know that we could come to you and say, okay, we're at the point we really need to do this. It's been great.
And we've not added any of those new positions without those increased revenues showing up.
Correct.
So if the revenues weren't there to support it, we weren't hiring, so.
And there have been some times in the past where there were some emergency situations where we were having difficulty getting folks, and the, you know, as we have met with contractors over the years, the very clear message that I have gotten from them is they are much more concerned about the service and the speed and the promptness than they are the fees, that they are willing to pay what's necessary to get good service.
Yes.
And they're obviously getting it based on the comments you're hearing, so that is a good thing.
And we do continue to monitor those fees since we have changed them, as you know, I brought to you, I guess, the first of the year, a few that we wanted to reduce, you know, based on experience. What we've got, working in it, we felt like they were just not, they weren't reflective of how much time we put in it. We will continue to do that. If we find others, we will bring those back to you and get those reduced as well or clarified, you know, as we work through it. We're trying to make sure every, all of the different types fit for what we want to do.
Okay, we have had a request to suspend the rules and approve this budget amendment to facilitate the purchase of these vehicles. So I would, at this time, entertain a motion to suspend the rules to take action on this tonight.
Is that moved?
Okay, we have a motion by Commissioner Kiger, a second by Commissioner Honeycutt. Any discussion? And this is a motion to suspend the rules. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, no. That motion passes. And at this time, I would entertain a motion to approve the budget amendment for construction standards from planning and development as has been requested.
Move for approval, Mr. Chairman.
Second.
Okay, that's a motion by Commissioner Schu, a second by Commissioner Strang. Any discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, no. That motion passes.
Thank you so much.
Thank you. Okay, and then Kelly also has the next item, a budget amendment to place Duke rebate revenues.
Yes, so as you are aware from several years ago now, it's been a while, Duke Energy has a rebate program that they allow us, when we produce a weatherization job, a completed weatherization job, and that client is a Duke Energy user, we are able to reach out to Duke as well and get rebate money on weatherization work that was funded through the state. And so the only requirement for that money is that it goes back into the program to expand service. So each month, well, depending on how quickly or when we're completing units, we submit to Duke and request rebate, and so that's what this is. This is rebate money on jobs that were completed under weatherization that we are requesting to place into an expense items, line item, so that we can extend that and serve more people.
Very good. Any questions on that one, commissioners? All righty, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, we move now to item 4.11, from recycling waste reduction, purchase of scrap metal roll-off containers, and I think I see Kevin Grant virtually with us. Welcome, Kevin.
Yes, sir, thank you. Good afternoon, everyone. The recycling waste reduction department is requesting the adoption of the attached budget amendment to purchase three 40 cubic yard roll-off containers. These containers will be used to collect scrap metal and appliances from Cabarrus County residents for recycling. White good funds will be used for the purchase of these three containers, and I think we discussed last month or two months ago when we were purchasing a roll-off truck, we just wanted to discuss white good disposal tax and what the white good funds are. So when you're purchasing a refrigerator, a range, water heater, freezer, air conditioner, washing machines, dryers, things like that, you're also paying a $3 disposal tax. This money that the state receives gets redistributed to the counties to support white goods and scrap metal recycling. So we typically get funds on a quarterly basis from the state for this. At this time, I think we mentioned this last month as well, that the fund balance that we currently have for white goods is at a level that they suspended paying us these funds, so with the help of the roll-off truck purchase and these containers, we should get low enough on our fund balance that we should resume getting these quarterly payments. So with that, just another note is the budget amendment currently right now is a little higher than the quoted price, and that's due to the very unstable metal market. Right now, their quotations or their quotes for us are only good for 10 days just because of the volatile nature of the metal market. I believe the current attached quote that we have is $5,678 per container. Last checking with the vendor, the prices are $5,990. So that's why, if you notice, the fund balance is a little higher than what the quoted, or what the quoted price is. With that, are there any questions?
Okay, anybody have questions for Kevin? I'm very happy to say that after visiting the landfill recently, I know what the roll-off container looks like and the truck, which I've questioned that in the past.
You saw the truck, that is correct.
Yeah. Okay, thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Okay, I think that completes our discussion items for action. Next up is approval of our regular meeting agenda. As close as I can determine, I know that we've made one change there on F12 on consent, so we would need to delete that one because we've already acted on it tonight. Does anyone know of any other changes that need to be made to that? If not, I would entertain a motion to approve the regular meeting agenda with the elimination of item F12.
Is that moved?
Okay, we have a motion from Commissioner Honeycutt, second by Commissioner Kiger. Is there any further discussion? Okay, hearing none. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, no, and that motion passes. We do have need of a closed session tonight, so at this time, I would entertain a motion to go into closed session to discuss matters related to pending litigation, economic development, and acquisition of real property as authorized by North Carolina General Statute 143-318.11A34 and 5.
Is that moved?
Second.
Okay, we have a motion by Commissioner Strang, a second by Commissioner Schu to go into closed session. Any discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, no. That motion passes, and we are now in closed session. We thank our television audience for joining us tonight.